Coming from California, which state have a largest number of entries this year. There were 238 dogs that traveled across country to show how much it took this year.
So the air could be sprayed or anything, right? But it has to be white for this, if you're judging.
Yeah, and the issue is the coat texture. You wanted to have that, you know, harsher outer coat, softer undercoat that's protected. There seems to be a few different varieties of this dog frequently, but different body size.
Very good, yes. And coat.
In Germany in the 19th century, the Leonberger was kept one of the cubs of the family for his drive and draft ability. And this is off on royal feet, valued for his secret temperament and companionship. The Leonberger makes a loving family dog that is comfortable for boys in the virtually eight-year-old setting for it. This is Leonberger, number 21.
And as Mr. Lyers had just talked about, the companionship is making us feel better and then.
You're on by yourself.
I'm in the meeting.
Join the meeting.
Big room, no audio again.
Can we hear us now?
There we are.
Can we hear us now?
Can hear him, but he can't hear us.
All right, he's on mute, yeah.
Norm, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Oh, he can?
All right, Kelly.
Yes.
Speak directly into the.
Kelly, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Oh, do you want to hear me sing?
Sure, why not?
Move toward John. This is a call to meeting to order. This is the Hampton Board of Selectmen and the Hampton Board of Health, February 16th, 2021, 7:05 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely using video tele- video conferencing technology as outlined by Governor Baker in his emergency order of March 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? Please raise your hand or signal in some way. All right, the, we have some minutes, but we're going to take up the assessors first under new business, the senior tax exemption. Kelly?
Yes, hi, good evening, how are you?
Thank you.
Hi, hi, Norm. Yes, so Mr. Scheres, the chairman, and I are here tonight to discuss the recommendation from the Board of Assessors to increase the income requirements for the clause 41(c) tax exemption, which applies to seniors of limited means. Losing my view, I'm not sure, I can't, can everyone see me? I can, I see Norm, but I don't see anybody else. Um, yes, so I know that I sent some information over showing the current requirements to qualify for this tax exemption. And currently, the income requirements are $15,000 annual income for a single person or $20,000 for a married couple. And the recommendation is to increase that requirement to $20,000 for a single person and $30,000 for a married couple. Now, as you see from the information that I had sent over, the income is just one of the requirements that must be met for this exemption.
Excuse me for interrupting, I have a question on the, I have a question on the income. It says allowable, less allowable social security. Is that, is the social security deduction, so is it really 24, $5,000 for a single person?
Yes, so it's actually, so, yes, correct, correct, so currently.
They get 4,000, they can deduct 4,000, okay, okay.
Yes, they can deduct 4,834 for a single or 7251 for a married couple. And that number changes annually. We, we are supplied that number from the state based off of, of the new social security deduction.
Okay, okay. Now, right, the assets.
Yes, so in addition to the income, they must be, the seniors must be 70 years of age or older. There are ownership and domicile requirements. They must own and occupy the property as of July 1st of that tax year, must have been continuously domiciled in Massachusetts for the 10 years preceding the application and have owned the property or other property in Massachusetts for five years. And then in addition to that, they must meet on both the income and the asset requirements. And the asset, the total amount of assets cannot exceed $30,000 for a single person or $35,000 for a married couple. And those assets, oh, I'm sorry.
And, and the, the value of the house and the car.
Are not included, correct, yes. Yes, so looking back, I know, I had looked back to see when these, the income and asset limitations were put in place in Hampton at town meeting. So it looks like that it was last done in 2004. And I think one of the reasons the board has kind of looked at this for a couple years and, and talked about the possibility of looking into increasing the income. There are some seniors that have contacted us who may have qualified in the past and because of a very small annual increase in their social security, it could have just knocked them outside of the bracket. And we have no flexibility at all with these numbers. If they're even a dollar over, it would mean they would not qualify, even if they met on the assets and all of the other requirements.
Norm is also on this.
So you said this was done at town meeting before, does that mean we can adjust it in our meeting here?
So what would need to be done in order for this to go forward? The Board of Selectmen would have to vote in favor of putting this as a warrant article for the annual town meeting. And then it would need to have a majority vote at town meeting in order for it to be increased. There are certain, and the amounts that we are, that the board is requesting, the 20,000 and 30,000 are within the limits that are allowed by the Mass General law.
I think.
Not in line with other towns either.
Right.
Certainly not out of line with other towns as well.
No, John, and that's what we did. We, we looked at the other surrounding communities just to get an idea if we were a little bit behind where everybody else was. And it kind of looked like we, we were. Like you said, we've had a couple people over the past few years apply that were just a little bit short on the, on that income number. Well, I mean, over, not short, over the number. And so they would qualify maybe if we just made an adjustment there a little bit. And it seems to be in line with what everybody else is kind of doing. So that's our rec, we voted as a board to recommend that we do increase the limits.
How many, Norm, how many people can take advantage of this?
Well, that, that excellent question. I asked myself that question. That's why I liked it.
He's the smartest man you know, right?
And the problem is, we don't know that, we, we don't know the answer to that question. Be, but we know that we currently, like this year, I think we, Kelly, or the past few years, we've had four applications annually. We know that in the past, at least maybe five to seven years, we've been going to the senior center and explaining all the, all these exemptions that are available to seniors and, you know, and so it's not, I don't think it's because people aren't aware it exists. And, and so our best guess is, I mean, if we were going to say a crazy number, it may increase by, you know, we think worst case scenario would be 10. And in all likelihood, it's going to be, we're guessing three to five. But that's purely a guess, because we don't know what people's income is until they tell us, so.
And even 10 would only be a $7,500, you know.
Right, and that, that's exactly the rationale. We said, well, even if it were 10, that would be $7,500. And, and these exemptions come out of our overlay account. And so, you know, we have a little bit of a surplus in the overlay currently now. We, I think we have one liability that we're waiting to be decided and we'll see how much that will be. So I think if we make an adjustment, we can not increase the overlay because of this, at least for a few years, to see how it shakes out. And so, you know, I don't think there's too much risk here to see how it goes.
Okay. So what, what type of motion do you need?
Well, I think we can write that up for you. Kelly, I don't know if you wrote the proposed one. Essentially, we're looking for one that says something to the effect of the, you know, will the town vote to increase the income limits for exemption 41(c) from whatever the numbers are for a single and then.
That's for the town meeting warrant, but you need it, you need us to vote tonight?
Yes, a vote, a vote is required to place it on, on the agenda for town meeting.
On the agenda, yeah, for the warrant, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to allow the assessors to place a, craft and place a motion on the annual town meeting warrant relative to clause 41 senior tax exemption.
This motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye. That's it, thank you.
Thank you both.
Okay, very good. Yes, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, good night now.
I'm going to apply for that. Okay. Okay, minutes for the June 8th. We're going to minutes, June 8th, 2020 minutes.
Part of the interview, part of the minutes.
I didn't find anything.
No, I think it was pre.
Motion for approval?
Would approve the minutes for June 8th, 2020.
Second.
Oh, no, no, exact, regular session. All in favor? Aye. June 15th, 2020, which was the annual town meeting. Okay, motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Is the, I know the November 30th is, November 30th regular is okay, so we're doing the November 30th executive session. Oh, look, Mr. Schneider was here that day too.
I agree, motion to approve. I'm sorry.
Okay. So a motion for the executive session.
Right.
All in favor? Aye. The December 21st, 2020 minutes. Well, is it, because it said the 21st on it, 2021. That's the only thing. That's the same thing with the executive session for that date.
I thought on page three, under public health nurse, it says Hampton is interested in pursuing this as is Wilberham. I thought we could just delete that since we said this will be discussed further. It says the same thing, and I'm not sure that we made a front that makes it.
Probably good.
And then, so that's the first issue that I had. And then, under, and then under, I don't know where this goes, but at the, the last line on the page, it says no decisions were made.
We were deleting that.
So I think you have to delete that.
Yeah.
Okay, so no decisions are made, is on the last line, should just be deleted, because it was just, just a motion to, to get out of executive session.
Well, actually, that whole line, just move it to the executive session minutes, because that's real, it's inside that.
Right, right.
Exactly, and put it up in that, yeah.
And then under the public health, I, I had a question about Hampton is interested in pursuing this as is Wilberham.
I thought we were, I didn't, I.
I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was the nurse, the nurse that we had discussed, it was the health agent. This is the public health nurse. So, but even if you eliminate it, it has the same intent. This will be discussed further means that we're going to be almost.
Well, yeah, but I think it's nice to have a sense that we were interested in, in pursuing it and will be discussed further. Just discuss further, it doesn't give the, I think, I thought our board walked away with saying, this is definitely, we're interested in exploring this for both, or multiple towns as we talked about in further meetings, depending on the hours, what do we need?
Exploring might be a word you could use, but pursuing, to me, meant we're going to do this. Whereas exploring just meant we're going to look at the pros and cons, we're going to have a discussion, we're going to look at the cost elements, all that kind of stuff. I think the word.
Exploring, sure.
Change, change pursuing, the public health nurse. Where it says Hampton is interested. Where it says Hampton is interested in pursuing, change pursuing to exploring.
Strike the last line.
Yes, that's fine.
And then strike that last line.
Strike the last line. So we have a motion with the amendments.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. And then we have the December 21st, 2021 executive session. No, 2020, that's going to be 2020 on that.
Regular, actual regular here.
No, we got regular, we did regular.
On the, on the agenda, it says the regular minutes.
Yeah, we did that, and I got this, I got the executive too.
Well, I thought we had the minutes, we struck the executive out of it, wasn't that what?
Yeah, yeah.
My understanding was, we, the minutes were good, they just need to be separated.
Separated, they were all in one.
The part that was the regular was okay, the part that was executive, okay, just need to be two separate documents, that's all.
And just change the date, because it still says 2021 there, okay? A motion for approval? We already, we did that one, we did that one. All right, very good, that's it, we're there.
And Pam is nearly up to date.
Good. Moving on undaunted, so we got the assessors, the Summers Road crosswalk update?
Yes. You know, I, I did order today the radar speed monitoring device. To be conservative, I only ordered one. We'll see what the cost of the other equipment is, the flashing signs and, and the crosswalk. And I'm sure we'll have, after that, some additional funding to get another one of those, which we can use not only to monitor speed, but also, as we mentioned before, you can put different messages on those, on those boards so that when, when come time for town meeting, we can use it for that purpose or any other notification of the public.
Bob, I had a question. I know we talked about, obviously, they're meant to be outdoors, but are they, do they need to be stored? When you're not using them, do they recommend inside storage and do we have a place for them at this point?
I don't know the answer to that, they're on wheels, so I, if you're not using them, well, would there be a time when we would not use them? We'll have to get, we'll have to get an answer on that. None of the literature said anything about that, that I had looked at. These are, this is the model recommended, by the way, by the police department.
And if they're on wheels, how do you secure them? So that somebody didn't move them or, you know, some kids just want to put it by their house.
I've seen cinder blocks, the ones in Long Metal, it's, you're right.
I've seen them chained.
If they're near a telephone.
Yeah. So.
What is the time of arrival, do we have any idea or no?
That will not be a long period. I'm getting another call tomorrow with more specifics on when they can ship. So they're coming from Kentucky. I had a little English issue when I was on the telephone. But this was rural Kentucky, very rural Kentucky, so.
Okay. All right. EV charging station?
Well, I had a conversation with another town administrator where I had initiated this project, and he told me that it's complete, it's working, and the public approves of it. This would be a charging station for electric cars, which we would, I would recommend somewhere in the parking lot, probably towards the back. Eversource will pay 100% of the cost of the electronics of putting in the electrical connections. And there's now a state program that will pay 100% of the cost of the hardware itself. And so the town can have one of these stations at no charge. The charge would go by the, incidentally, the town doesn't pay the electrical bill here. If you have an EV and you want to charge it, you roll up to the, to the charging station and use a credit card for whatever amount of electricity that you consume.
Okay, I'm just going to say it right out there, why? My first is, my son has an electric car, so he plugs in at home.
Yeah.
I don't think he's going to drive through the town hall, plug in for three hours, because they don't, I've had a loaner, and it's not quick. So what's the?
Well.
I know it's free to have, and they're going to make money on people charging up, but.
I think we're going to see a lot more of these, a lot more electric cars. I mean, General Motors made their commitment, and Ford now has this SUV coming out that's entirely electric. The other car manufacturers are going to be making the switch, and I think this is just a matter of some convenience. If a, a town employee or someone who comes into the, into the town for some business might want to plug in for a while. These, if you, if you charge at home, it typically takes four, five, six hours.
That's why I want to ask, is this a rapid charge?
This is a rapid charge. And I've seen them at supermarkets even, where you have parking space and there's a canopy over top that has the, the electric cells, and underneath you have the charging station. So you come, you plug in, you go into the, into the store.
Don't they have them at the lower level at Holyoke Mall?
I think they do.
But, um. I don't. It just doesn't feel quite like we're ready for that yet.
Why are we doing this again? That's, not that it's not nice, and if there were 12 people on the Zoom call that said, hey, that's great, I'd love to bring my car for a rapid charge, that'd be different, but.
If you leave your car, can they just, can somebody just come and get, take your car?
No, no.
It locks, the car locks?
Lock your car.
The gas tank is, you're just plugging in there, the car, you know, it's not.
So the car, the car is protected.
Cars would be locked if you're in the building.
At the, at a gas station, they had them in the back, and a person was doing it, and she said she couldn't leave her car. She said the only problem is I have to sit in this car for an hour. No, I don't know why she, maybe there was nothing else to go to or something, I don't, I didn't ask her in any detail, but that's what she said, she said I have to sit in the car for now.
I just want to pop up the chat and say, if we're not catching.
You mentioned info from the crowd, and there's people watching who say that, that charging stations are the future and we need to do it now. If it's free, why not?
Right. That's Dave Hayward, he works for the utility. No, no, I'm telling you, he's got, he's retired from there. Dave, you're not shilling for the utility, we appreciate that, thank you.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not anything that the town needs to do, it's just that this is coming our way, and I thought it'd be a way of getting ahead of it, and.
I'd like to see exactly where they're planning on putting it, we're kind of limited with space here, so where they're plugging in, et cetera.
Do you, do you see the Commonwealth or some other entity mandating that police cars, town trucks, small town trucks, et cetera, be electric?
Well, they're.
It's part of the Green Communities thing, you know.
Well, not trucks, small, now I guess there's going to be production by Ford and by Tesla of electronic pickup trucks. My guess is, if we're for light duty, it may be appropriate at some point, if you're with the Green Communities program, it may be something that they would require. Right now, that's not required. Actually, none of the vehicles at the highway department, other than a personal car, would, would come under the guidelines for Green Communities.
There are two cars, I think, at the police department. You have the detective court car plus the chief car, which are more, I won't say personal, but they're not 24/7 vehicles, which would be appropriate if there was some rebate funding, something like that, that allowed us to get something. If we turn them over to green vehicles, how does that help our town? In terms of, like you say, becoming embedded, embedded, if you will, in the green community.
Well, I mean, I think, I think it's, it's coming, and everyone will have, it'll be everywhere soon, I know. Where I, where I work, they have, most of the stores have the.
Do they, I think, why?
Yeah, but the, the stations now, yeah.
If it costs us nothing, I'm amenable to exploring it. I'd just like to know where it's going, because you come in your days and seen the parking lot full. So where.
Option would be to put it out on the street, on Main Street. That way, you didn't have to connect it necessarily to Town Hall.
Yeah, now they have to be able to link in to get the, like I say, if they're swiping for card payment, that might be a little more prudent.
All right, well.
A little more explanation.
Do a little more work on it.
What were we just using? We're interested in exploring it further.
Okay. All right, deficit spending for snow and ice.
I don't think Mark's.
We didn't, we didn't think Mark needed to be honest, it's.
Annual deficit.
Right. So the, the account, the snow and ice account's down to $5,000, and Mark's asking for approval for deficit spending to finish the winter off.
If we want to get through the storm on Friday, that'd be a good idea, I think. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the highway superintendent to spend the snow and ice account into the red.
Motion is seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Main Street drinking water.
Bob's got.
Well, we had a conference call today with the representative from Ty &amp; Bond, Mr. Vasinski, John, myself, to talk about the options. And there are quite a few. And as a result, I think what we came away with is that Ty &amp; Bond is going to prepare a proposal to evaluate data and to evaluate all the options and recommend to the town the best choice. As you may know, we've talked about a new well, we've talked about using water from Green Meadow School, we've talked about, well, actually, I found out today that there are two public water supplies. We had talked about the Scantic Valley Water Supply, an extension down. We had talked about the Scantic Valley Water Supply, an extension down Main Street from their operation up by the Audubon, yes, Audubon. And so what's the best choice, long-term for the town? And also, obviously, the most economical choice. And so I think we both came away, at least I came away, thinking that we needed professional advice for this, rather than just plunging ahead with something that sounded good, so that we can understand all the, all the ups and downs and consequences, unintended and consequences and so forth. So they're going to prepare a proposal and come to the town for funding. That is going to present a problem for us, since our choice would be to wait until the annual town meeting in May before getting this done. I think that would not be popular in terms of that much delay in just coming up with a plan and then having to go out for funding for the plan. And so if the proposal comes in at a modest price, I think we have one choice, and that's to go to the advisory committee and say, if we could have this money, it's an unanticipated expense, we'll try and reimburse it at the annual, if you insist, but, you know, that's what this reserve fund is for, and let's get busy as soon as possible getting this design done, so that, or getting this analysis and design done, so that come annual town meeting, we can get some funding and move down the track here with a resolution of this rather chronic problem.
Have we not gone to Ty and Bond before on this with other, and have, because I see their name comes up a lot in this discussion.
Well, Ty and Bond has been, Ty and Bond has been the town engineer for, gosh, 25, 30 years.
And have not had specific problems.
Road projects, they've addressed issues that we brought to them. This is the first time, as Bob said, we're saying to them, why don't you come up with a, a larger solution, basically, looking at all the different things? And we were talking, there could be five different A, B, C, D. And let, then bring them back to us with the different cost points on them, and let our board look at them and say, where do we want to go from here? As Bob said, they're the experts. Let's ask them really to, you do the design rather than, I think you referred to a Band-Aid before.
Right, exactly. We don't want to do that. We want to come up with something permanent. Do I understand that Green Meadows is not really an option, though, any longer? Because I thought that the water...
One of the options.
Oh, oh, I had heard that it was.
Well, there's some problems with it.
Problems with it.
Everyone, every potential solution has a challenge.
Right.
Question is, which challenge is too big for us?
Right, okay.
And it's likely if you run a pipe down Main Street, there might be other customers.
But that might get, as we talked about, now you get into, are you...
A water district or...
Right, and we have, this is a district that was created by state action. So talking to the commissioners as well, what action is appropriate that you have to go back to the general, the general court with the board and ask for an expansion of that, and they may not say, no, we didn't do this as a solution for the landfill pollution to allow you to generate a water sale district.
Okay, so we're going to Ty and Bond, we're going to the advisory committee to get the money for Ty and Bond to do the study.
We're, we're going to get a proposal, which I'll bring before you.
Right.
And assuming that the cost be in the range of 15,000, maybe less, review it, and then the only source of funding between now and the annual town meeting would be the reserve fund.
Okay. And then we would tell Ty and Bond we wanted this report done by date specific in the spring.
As soon as they can get it done.
So that we can go to the town meeting with that information, right?
Otherwise, it's a special.
Okay, okay.
Okay. I'm going to skip over the executive session, we'll do that last. Correspondence, we received a Mr...
Selectmen's report. I've got a quick couple things.
Okay, we'll do a selectmen's report first.
Okay, basically, met with COA board meeting today. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have a quorum, but Becky gave a pretty good update on the status there, as you're aware, you know, they're working on vaccine, working on the food to go. I commend them for the constraints they're working under, they're doing a fabulous job. Now starting the tax program, and again, tough to do in a hands-off environment. But, so, I did ask, is there any word on, I believe they were Phase 4 originally, and that's so far down the road, they can't even hazard a guess as when they might open up again, because so many of their programs are closer than you and I. So just to report, they're doing a good job. Planning Board, same thing, and Phil could probably speak there, they got a myriad of issues in front of them that they're addressing. Solar, possible bylaw things, you know, possible street that's still not determined yet, right?
Tom was, well, Bob's on here too.
Yeah.
Tom came into us last week. Tom State, City of... Of course, there's two sides to every story. I'm sure there's two sides to the story, but he is vigorously trying to settle this thing, because he's been approached to sell the other two streets, about to sell, he's turned down four lots already. So as soon as he's out of court and settled with the kiddies, there'll be, he says there will be activity there.
So that's progressing along. So do you anticipate there might be a motion this spring or not to accept the street? And I'll go to...
I don't think so. Do you, Bob?
Okay. Like I say, we've, all right.
Muted.
Yeah.
I mean, you got to have it done by April.
Right.
That's only six weeks.
And you'd have to have another...
I think their court date is mid-March.
And you'd have to have another engineering inspection to certify the whole, you know, yeah, right.
Absolutely, we'd have to update and, you know, there's one thing between him and Mark.
Okay, let's make it right. Do it once.
Bob is unmuted.
Okay. All right, well, that was it for my, my boards. Oh, and quickly, just the same report, I think Bob gave before, we're still progressing on the highway building addition.
Correct. I've got a report also.
Yeah, all right.
Just let me quickly report from the Board of Health. I had brought up, I have brought up a couple times, a public health nurse, and I would like to put in $10,000 into the selectmen's budget so that we could fund that position. If we don't, if we decide not to go that route, that would be okay, because we, but we at least have the funding to go forward with it, should we choose to. So if everybody's in agreement, I would make a motion that we include in the selectmen's budget $10,000 to fund a public health nurse.
So you're adding a line item? Okay.
How are we paying, how are we paying her now?
Right now, we pay her under COVID.
Right.
And we, I assume we will continue to pay her under COVID till December at least, probably longer, because it's probably going to go into the spring, who knows? If she did five to 10 hours a week, it would be $10,000. It's 5,600, I think, for five hours, something like that. And then it, so, and we have a person that's willing to continue in that, in that capacity, and I think we might as well hold on to her, number one, and number two, I think it would be a good asset to the town to have a person in that position.
I think there's excess in the town administrator amount, so we, I think we have plenty.
Oh. So we don't even, we don't need a line?
No, no, I'm just, I'm saying, we'll just take it from Bob's.
Just take it.
But I think, and I think you mentioned it before, we're going to have to look at the funding for somebody replace Lori, because I think we had a really good deal for Lori.
Right.
And I think going forward, we know it's not going to be on the, on the cheap anymore.
If we have four communities contributing to it now, it may, and we are the smallest, so we may not be up significantly.
We may be up, but not, you know, not...
Exactly, similar to the veterans district thing, where, you know, we're apportioned.
Exactly.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
No, it's not really a motion. It's just, you want to add a line item, you add a line item. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right.
Sure.
It's not like that type of thing.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I mean, we review our budget, we're all good with it, and we turn it up.
Okay. All right. Can we do correspondence now?
Yes, shall we?
Yes, we shall. So we received a, a letter, an email from one of the school committee members of the Hampton Wilberham Regional School District, and suggesting that, or asked, yeah?
Can I interrupt? I, I really think that this letter has to be discussed in executive session, because it impacts, perhaps impacts negoti, the lawsuit that is pending and the litigation that is going on. And I think at, Mr. Pacula, Attorney Pacula, had suggested that it be in executive session, and that it be handled a certain way. And I think we, so I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a subject of executive session, because it was a, an email, not a confidential email, it was simply a suggestion that we meet with them to discuss a possible, I don't want to say settlement, but a possible compromise in some way to put it in, you know, to, in the litigation that would be, you know, suitable for both towns.
So basically, it's FYI.
Yeah.
No, it's not FYI.
Well, you're, you're letting us, you're letting us know, Don, that you got an email asking, suggesting that perhaps we start a little conversation.
Right.
Well, I, I was, I was concerned about the, about the email. I think that it included Mr. Russell in the discussions. He has not been a part of this, he has not been a part of this forever. I mean, never. We invited him to join in with us, he said, no, he didn't want to be part of it, or that was, did not want to be part of it. So I don't know why they would be involved. I had questions about some of the language he used in the letter that I thought was open to, open to, to our, to the case that we might want to use. I was concerned that Attorney Pacula had stated that he thought he should deal with the issue and that, and that he individually should deal with the issue, and that it should be done in an executive session. I think if we have an attorney, and the attorney says, what, what should happen, I think we should probably go by what the attorney says. I mean, I, we don't, the attorney said, uh...
Do you have a copy of the letter, Bob?
I, I have the original letter. You want the original?
Which one?
It was in your packet.
On Tempe's or...
Yeah, by the town parents. It's in the packet somewhere.
Yeah, I got it. Go ahead, Neil. Um, it just seems to me that... I just think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a matter for, it's a matter for executive session.
Well, what would we decide in executive session? We would decide whether we want to talk to them or not.
And, and some of the content, and, and what we would be talking about.
Well, there's no...
I mean, I don't think you can just say, okay, we'll go and talk, and we have no consensus on, from the board, what we're going to talk about or what the issues are. He has not, he has not stated what the issues are really, except that he wants to do this strategic plan, and he wants to do a slot, and he thinks that may give us, he says, this, he can't do that, because that will expose some of their weaknesses in public forum, which could prove to be significant opportunity for the town of Hampton to obtain possible points of argument to be used during litigation. I think that that's part, that's an executive session kind of discussion to have, for us to have, so we know where we're going. I mean, I don't think you can just get carte blanche and say, okay, go and do whatever.
No, I think what we would do is we would say, okay, what do you have in mind? And you tell us, then we come back to the board, then we have the executive session to decide whether it's anything that we care about. But right now, we don't even know what they're talking about.
But when you go into what you have in mind, it is logical that the person will say, well, I think that will fly, I don't think that will fly, I will bring that back to the board. I just think that we ought to have the person that's doing the discussion have some idea of where the board is going, and what the board thinks is important. But Mr. Schneider is here, maybe he can give us some insight that would just enlighten us. Mr. Schneider.
I have, I just have a couple of questions. And I believe discussion is always good. Does Mr. Bontempi represent the entire, I'm sorry, not the entire, but is he representing the, the school committee?
It's not clear.
It's not clear.
It's not clear. So I think he's looking for points of discussion, you know, what do you think of discussions? And if you go, I would suggest that at a minimum, a lawyer's would.
That's okay. Great from the back. You look better from the back than me.
It's not the truth.
That's in the minutes now.
So I believe there has to be a little bit of direction, and I know that fact finding is great, but you still can't go fact finding without saying, you know, why lead him down a path that you're not willing to go down? Every negotiation I've ever gone into, I've always had a general idea of what we're, what the end game would be. So if Mr. Bontempi's representing the school committee, they've probably given him some guidelines, maybe, you know, hopefully. So I would say if you're going, to at least invite the attorneys.
Well, I have no intention of going, because I don't know that much about the case, by prime, you know, you know, the nuances.
Absolutely. Mary Ellen started since the beginning.
I, my thought would be that I would have you, the attorney, and Mary Ellen, because you know, you're the liaison, Mary Ellen's liaison with the school committee, and she knows most about it, and of course, Ed, our attorney's our attorney.
But do you think we would be going to a brief executive session to say, this is really, we don't, we really rather not, we just want to be, we just want to be there feeling them out? Or, I mean, I don't know. I, I just think it's important that the school, this kind of school has a sense of where we're at, and that we're at the same height. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I think, you know, and I, I know it's difficult sometimes, because we have to be careful how we phrase things here versus what we talked about in executive session. But I think we had a sense in the last one with Attorney Pacula of where he felt the case stood. And I don't think, and Phil, you were here for that, that taking this type of action, communicating with the other side, is against what he was recommending as a possible solution at all.
To let him, let him go.
If he wants to talk to Mr. Attorney Sweeney or whatever, you know, and come back to the board, well, I've had some informal discussions, and this, I think, is, I don't think there's anything wrong. We see, if you will, a willingness on at least one member of the school committee to say, can we just move forward with this in some way? And I think it's, our attorney could talk to their attorney and see if that's a more of a groundswell. I don't think that's wrong.
Well, agreed, but Mr. Bontempi did take the initiative to ask.
Yep.
Which is a big step forward.
I wonder if it's because he's, and I think I heard this from Maura, isn't he chairman of the Finance Subcommittee? So maybe they're looking at, wow, are we going to have to appropriate more money next year for legal, or can we start getting...
Whatever the reason, at least the door's open, and I don't think we should pass it up.
Yeah.
I, I agree that, I agree that we should, we should be having a dialogue. My concern is that the last time people went over and talked to them, they came back with a settlement. And it really wasn't a settlement to the liking of the majority of the town, and I wouldn't want that to happen again.
Well, it didn't happen that time either, as you know. And you can ask Attorney Pacula, the settlement was developed by Attorney Pacula and Attorney Sweeney without the knowledge of the board's selection of either town.
So that's the same thing that's going to happen, I mean, that's...
Right, but that's different than what you said. Our board, no, our board was not involved in that settlement.
I didn't say you were, you're the board. I meant whoever went over there. I don't even know who went over there, but I do know...
Attorney Pacula.
I knew Pacula was there and...
And Sweeney.
Sweeney was there.
That was it.
I don't, well, I thought, I thought Norm Scherest was there at one point.
No. No, and I even asked that, Ed emailed me back and said, that's correct. It was just the two attorneys developed the settlement.
Well, whatever. They did, they, they had the meeting and they, and they came up with a resolution, and I would not want that to happen again unless it was in keeping with what the board wants.
To John's point, though, the resolution came back to the board to be voted on.
Uh huh, right.
Which, at that point, it was turned down. No.
No, it was endorsed.
No, it was endorsed.
To go to town meeting, right.
To go to town meeting.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That was...
So, but...
Three decades.
But I think your point again is that, should there be at some point, some dialogue between some level? Sure, let the two attorneys come back with some options, back to both, both boards. bo, both boards. And obviously, because their attorney can pull their board, our attorney can pull our board. And I think Ed already has a sense of, after the last, where we stand in our, and he doesn't need to show his cards, but he can certainly get a sense of where they're standing.
We could authorize that, we, I'm sorry, you, you can authorize that. And he had requested it during his previous letter.
Sure.
But all I'm saying is, negotiating my entire career, a member has reached out to our board, to our chairman. I think the response should come back from, from Don as to what the board, you know, I, I wouldn't want Ed to contact Attorney Sweeney.
Without.
Without Don.
With me telling the rules.
Absolutely. I mean, we got to tell, we got to tell him who's driving the bus.
I think that's appropriate. Yeah, right.
You know, because.
So you're saying, yes, and if I hear you correctly, an appropriate thing would be a response back from Don. Thank you for your, your communication. We appreciate the opportunity. We're going to have our attorney contact your attorney and see if there's any avenue for exploration further. And that's an appropriate response back. Something like that. Okay.
Now, also, Phil, excuse me, before you go, several people in the chat line have asked, if you tell them how you've been involved in the camp. They're asking if you're the town, town council and so forth. They want to know how, they want to know how you're, you've been involved in the case.
Uh...
Do you remember?
I'm Phil Snyder, resident, Raymond Drive, four years now. Four years ago, I chaired a committee by town meeting request to look at the deregionalization of the school system. And that morphed into our October meeting where the town authorized money to pursue the school committee accepting students across town lines. The town of Hamden felt, and I'll get to the, to the response. I know I'm wandering. The town of Hamden felt the contract was breached. The school committee felt it wasn't. So you go to court. And I've been involved as the liaison for the board of selectmen. I work, I work with the Attorney Paculas. There's Christine and Edward out of Springfield. I'm their liaison. But no, I am not an attorney. I don't even claim to know half of the laws. But that's how I've been involved since the beginning.
You're doing a fine job. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
So I am, so just so I'm clear, I'm going to respond to Dr. Bontempi by saying that we've discussed it at the board and we've directed our attorney to contact your attorney for further exploration. And then I'll send an email to Ed Pacula so he knows as well. So, okay. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Phil, for your attendance.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, I'm not going to, you're going to send Ed?
Right, I'm going to send that to Ed.
Good.
You're going to stay with us.
I put a copy.
All right.
I just got my head out of the pictures.
Email.
Okay. I'll keep looking. I'll keep looking. No, no, maybe, there we go. No, no, it's under here.
Yeah, that's it.
Town administrators report.
Okay.
Please.
Mary Ellen asked if we have an update in general as to, on a lot of the things that we're involved with. So I went back to the focus list. Remember the focus list from last July? I know there are people who say that the, the board takes too much time and doesn't get a lot done. If you look at this focus list, a lot has been done. The capital planning committee is revived and meeting every two weeks. Actually, we met this afternoon and took a tour of the fire station and are going to be continuing a discussion of the, of the fire department and the fire station. Classification compensation report is due. It should be in our hands within, I would hope, two weeks. Hire a conservation agent. A conservation agent has been hired and she's on the job every day, doing well. Fire station study completed. We had some open committee appointments, the ambulance oversight committee, those appointments are filled, the annual report committee, two volunteers have stepped forward. The principal assessor replacement, that person has been hired. Regional dispatch, a decision was made to consolidate. Selectment liaisons, they have been assigned and completed. Selectment's policy manual has been agreed to and completed by the board. And the senior center feasibility study has been completed. So, and there's a new list that came out two weeks ago. So we are going to, we did have an impact bargaining session. I'm going to give you the results of that tonight in executive session. We did tour the fire department today and I think all the members of the committee showed up. And I think got a very good review of the fire department. And incidentally, we saw the new ventilation system. The hardware is, is installed, now waiting for the electronics.
Yeah, along those lines, the, one of the goals for March 1st is the completion of the fire ventilation project. So maybe you could relay that to the chief and he, so he has a timeline of when we thought the thing would be done.
Okay. The ambulance oversight committee met last week and this was the quarterly review. We found that the Action Ambulance Company was providing good service. Our response time in the last quarter, the response time of the ambulance once called is five minutes and one second average, which is a, a very significant improvement upon the situation that existed prior to July 1. I have scheduled an exit interview with Chief Farnsworth. The water heater at the police department failed. We thought at one point we'd have to buy a new one, but they were.
Yes, sir.
I thought that we would have to purchase another one, but it was able to be repaired. I did call Congressman Neal and requested an earmark for the Hamden Fire Station, as requested.
Yeah.
Not sure what's going to happen there, but they are going to be doing the big.
You home right now?
Okay.
Yeah, I know. I, I know. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm still on the air with them. That's why I want to.
That's a.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, let's see, what else? The financial folder has been made available on the OneDrive to the advisory committee. Casino mitigation funding. Here, we, we discussed last week, a tip project, a transportation improvement program, a project which provides federal money passed through the state to do significant and very expensive projects. In this case, the focus would be at the intersection of East Long Meadow Road, Wilbraham Road and Allen Street, and to try and make some safety improvements. The board suggested that I be in touch with a couple of consulting firms and advise them that we may be asking for design services and have them come in before the selectmen and offer some ideas. So if you're still in a mood for that, that's what I'll do. Also, it was pointed out in a phone call that I had with Mary Thurlow, who's in charge of the, of the, the casino mitigation funding, that they have a separate account for transportation construction for up to a million dollars. And she said, whatever monies you need, after you expend all of the $100,000, if you want to do design, we can ask them for the money. And she sounded a lot like the state line 11 office. We've got the money and we're looking to spend it, you know? So what I come away with is this, that we can get a project designed, we can get federal funding, and depending upon the schematic that they come up with, if it's acceptable to the board of selectmen and the highway department, we might go forward and get a project done there that would make that intersection safer. We did set up, the Zoom system is now set up in the auditorium for other boards and committees. The board of selectmen will move up there eventually, but for now at least, Conservation Commission is going to use it tomorrow night. We were up there today setting the, setting up the system. And what they're going to do is, you know, the new TV is going to sit basically against the, the stage. And they'll have one table flaring out from the TV like this where the Conservation Commissioners will sit. So they can sit here, they can look at the TV. And when they get the in-person people coming into the meetings, they can sit over on that side. So they can both look at the people who are in, in person, in attendance, as well as look at people coming in on Zoom. So it's going to be tried out tomorrow night by the Conservation Commission.
Well, we did talk about the other day, Bob, was it possible getting everything electronic so we could do screen sharing with the audience as well?
Yes.
Right, okay.
And when do we anticipate they're going to open the meeting? Do we have any idea of that? Or is it presently possible?
Uh, that'll really depend on what the governor decides. And I, I'm not sure, I don't know what the timetable is going to be.
Okay.
What about double meetings, Bob? Do we have a second account now or?
No. Actually, I'm sorry. The advisory committee has their own account. It's a private account.
Okay, so they're using Carols.
Right. The Conservation Commission and the Planning Board are able to do their own separate meetings. So I don't have to use this account, which is good because some nights we're going to be here and the advisory committee will be in another room.
That's the only conflict.
So, yeah, so that's, all this paid for with CARESAC money.
Are we going to have any discussion about the, the intersection or is that a done deal? Are we going to go ahead with that?
I don't know that we have a go ahead. We, we're, we're discussing right now the concept and whether or not the selectmen are agreeable to taking the next step, which would be to get a couple of firms, probably Ty and Bond, probably Fussin' O'Neil, both local firms, to come in and offer some ideas on what to do with the intersection. And then if the selectmen are agreeable to it, then we would basically contract with one of those companies to do design.
That's my understanding that that has already been, there's money available to do that already. Am I mistaken on that?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Statement, yeah.
That's a, that's a no-brainer is that we should at least have that information to be able to go forward.
Yeah. I think it's fair to say that whatever design work we can get done for Public Works and Highway, we should do it. Because I think it's clear that both parties in Washington are supportive of some kind of big infrastructure bill.
Right.
It makes sense for the town to get design done where we need the projects done. And so we have, you know, shovel-ready projects when the spigots are turned on.
Yeah, exactly. So, so my, my concern is, is that our, the, the effect on our quality of life will not change at all. It'll actually improve. It'll save people's lives and gingery. I don't know how many accidents have occurred at that intersection, but it's dangerous. And we could, we could look at other improvements in that whole project. So I'm 100% for that.
The committee.
Okay.
Chairman of the intersection committee, I think.
Okay, next item, the public health excellent grants are now out from the Department of Public Health. In a conference call on Friday, it was agreed that the towns of Munson, Long Meadow, Wilbraham and Hamden would pursue one of these grants to facilitate our discussions, pay for any expenses and facilitate our discussions on how do we organize health inspections after the, the health inspector that we currently have retires in the summer. So we have time to do this and money is available. And so Lynn and Long, Lynn, the town manager in Long Meadow has agreed, filed the application. And I did mention the video conference today with Peter Valinsky.
And James Collins.
What?
James Collins also.
James Collins, yeah. Just one other item, on February 18th, the east of the Connecticut River Chamber of Commerce on Zoom at 3 o'clock, they're asking selectmen to join the meeting, at least for a while. And I'll, I'll send you an update on the Zoom code.
No, there's no requirement for posting for something like that because it's just attending a.
Somebody else's meeting.
Conference, basically, right, okay.
And you also gave us an updated grants list, which included the police department in it. And so this is the final grants list.
Yes.
And I do have concerns that it seems to me that various departments put in for grants that we don't know about and the town administrator doesn't know about. And I think that we ought to have a procedure where all grants that are, that town workers apply for go through the town administrator for his information that he can then share with us. So we know what the grants are. I, I had a discussion with Bob about this and he said that he had asked that that happens, but that it really doesn't happen, all that efficiently.
I guess, yeah, I just, I wasn't sure because you brought this up before and I think we endorsed it, that we would, that Bob would be CC'd on anything.
Yes, so he would know.
Not looking for his approval on it, for instance.
His information and it would be on a list so that you don't get a surprise. Okay, we got $200,000 to do whatever and we don't know anything about it.
Well, I think it's typically, and I know, for instance, as Becky has mentioned in the past, they get, gosh, two grants.
Yeah, they're on the list.
Yeah. But they've always gotten them. It's an annual thing. Our board has always been informed about them.
But not all the grants that are applied for do we know about. Like, like you, you know about the fire department, whether, I don't even know, they did two little things, which you just hear about in, in passing, but there's no procedure where they have to notify the town administrator and he includes it in his, in his weekly report. There is no procedure to that. We just heard about it casually after it had happened.
He emailed us.
Not at the time, not, not before the, I don't, I, I'd have to look up the timing of it.
I thought, I thought we got an email from Eddie talking about the status of grants he applied for. And Eddie even joked about they applied for a new truck, wasn't it, Don? He thought like, no chance on that one.
Well, it just, it just seems to me that a more organized system is that one person, usually the town administrator, knows all the grants that are being applied for. And since Bob has asked for this and hasn't received it, I thought a letter from the board of selectmen should go to the town, to all the employees and say, if you wish to apply for a grant, please notify the town administrator. So he has a master list of what they are.
No, that's, that's a different statement. If you're going to apply for a grant, please copy us on the grant application, not, you must notify the town administrator or you can't apply for the grant. That's a different, that's a different thing. And I don't think we're making that statement. Because the town administrator, again, it goes back to, he's the town administrator who works for the board of selectmen.
Right.
He's not the town manager that every board has to report to and get permission from. And Bob, you've been both, right? And there really is a differential between the powers of, you know. I think you're right. He should be in information repository, which is great.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. So you could go to him at any time and say, what are the grants that we're in the, running for?
Right.
And he could have a full list.
Make sure, hey, if you're sending something to state, drop a carbon copy to Bob. So he can tell the board, hey, Department of Park and Rec sent off our grant. That's a great thing.
Pam, would you please draft a letter for my signature to that effect?
He wants to come home and go, dead.
Thank you.
But I want, when you get to page two, make sure we look it over.
Thank you. Don't, don't show it to them.
And lastly, we, we have some composite questions for the interviews next week. So...
I've got a couple of ideas.
It includes what I provided, what Chairman Davenport provided and what, yeah, I think I got, Michael Glover provided. And John had some stuff too, so. Michael Glover provided and John had some stuff too, so.
It, it, I, it seemed to me that we ought to just check the ones, check the ones that you want to cover. I thought Don could just cover all of his because they're, they were pretty succinct. And I can pick, and we should probably, we should maybe have five each of us because that would give enough time, you know, a couple of minutes for each answer. So if we picked those five, and then the only other thing I would mention is at the bottom, I changed the, so I just put all the, all your questions in here, the Marcos, Mr. Marcos, Mr. Davenport's and mine. And then I, for the essay, I said, for the next 20 minutes in three paragraphs, share your top priority. Because I thought that they should have a time limit, otherwise we might have to stay here until the next day. And then I wanted to just ask the Board if they wanted it to be a handwritten document or a computerized document. Because it is going to be whatever, whichever way you prefer, we can just set them up individually with the sheet of paper. This is the question, go in the next room and answer using your pen or using this computer that we provide for you or this typewriter or whatever. So here, you can use mine, I don't need mine. So what, so what we would be doing between now and the next week, right? Because the next week's the interview.
Yeah.
Picking out the five questions that you want, okay? I, I would assume we'll leave Don's alone because those were the dispatch and the, and the dark, dark station and all those. And they were five, sorry, those are the ones, and then. Well, I'll do them a different way then, I'll send them a different way. No, no, they're in pages, but I, maybe I forgot to change it over.
Yeah.
So, so I, shall, shall I circle the ones I'm going to do and then, right now? And then I'm going to do that one.
I've notified the three applicants, notified the fourth applicant, no, at this time. I've notified the three internal applicants that we want all three of them to come here on Monday night. I assume at 5:30, I didn't give them the time, I said, I'll tell you the timing next week. But I'm, I'm assuming 5:30 with a half an hour for each one, because we have to go at 7 o'clock to the Advisory Committee. All three are going to go into that room, that's the administrator's office, draw numbers in terms of who will go first, who goes second and who goes third. And two would stay there while one is here. When you're finished the interview here, we take the next two. And that way, those who interview later will not know the questions and have, you know, an advantage in the process.
On the honor system on the other two sitting here.
Yeah.
Well, quick question, why are we going to Advisory at 7?
They want to talk about the, the selectmen's budget.
We haven't seen it yet. We had the preliminary one, I asked, were we getting quotes and all those things and nothing's come back to us.
We're going to get the Board of Health transfer station.
We're going to get the budget to look at first before we go there.
Okay.
You know, we have, we ask them to kick that off. And that way if we run late for the police thing, we have more time.
You can ask them to do that and then you would want to move the interviews forward to 6, start at 6.
Normal time.
That's true. Okay, so let's still, do you want to meet at 5:30? Review our questions and then start interviewing at 6?
Yeah.
That's a great plan. That way, Mary Ellen, if you want to kick that document, if it's in wrong format, we can see it.
Yeah, then we can circle, we can all pick our. All right, anything else to come before the Board?
I added the evaluation criteria, I added the word essay, the other one is essay, how they, how they, you know, are they articulated?
Anything else to come before the Board?
Quickly, you mentioned Bob Town Report before. I know I've seen Don, I've seen your report, I haven't seen the Board of Health report for the Board to review. No, for our Board to review. Right. Right, but it comes to our Board, we're the Board of Health. Right, yeah. So, well, basically we sign off on the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health report and then bring it to a meeting. Yeah, thank you. Keep it under seven pages, we really do have a limit. Small font.
What was the decision on the intersection of study? Are we going to go ahead with that or is that, what's going on?
We're going to talk with a couple of firms and ask them to come up with some ideas and come before the Board. The Board would then presumably, if they want to go forward, decide on one of the two firms and ask them to begin the design process. In the meantime, I will be lining up the money.
Okay, on, on, just another matter, we did get a letter about, from Hatch, Donna Hatch, about a service zone plan that she had, had addressed to all of us. And I think we maybe should just respond to her, thank you for the letter, the ambulance committee will handle this, you know, that kind of a deal. Other committees that I have been on, like the region, for example, have a secretary that when you want something written, they say, okay, and they draft it and they give it to you. If we want to consider that, we don't have to do it right now, but if we want to consider that, because I think we should, anybody that has, has sent us a communicate, we should respond to in some manner. And maybe you're already doing that, but if you're not, we can get somebody else to do it for you or you can do it or whatever, but.
For one of the ad hoc committees, you mean, or?
Anything that somebody sends, whenever somebody sends something to us, I think it's nice to send back to them and say, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to respond.
I agree with you, but for former boards and committees, they typically have somebody. And the ad hoc ones, typically you also, who wants to do it? And somebody says, I'm pretty good at typing. For an ad hoc committee, that, that type of thing.
It just, it just was brought to my, my attention by, you know.
If we haven't responded, you're right, it should be a response.
I thought, you know, there's sometimes there's a go back and forth, but we should have a, never mind, if we don't want to do it. I will tell you personally, if I get those and I get a lot of.
Anything else to come before the Board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go on executive session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining with the dispatch union.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing impact bargaining, bargaining with the dispatch union without a return to open session.
All in favor?
John Flynn, aye.
Don Davenport, aye.
Mary Ellen Glover, aye.
Thank you all, be safe, watch out for that storm this week.